Further notice was posted and filed as required by law saving the board to meet and close session at 6:30 PM in the Pittman High School Media Center. President shall entertain any objections with supporting reasons to the conduct of this meeting on the grounds that it violates the Open Public Media Act. Seeing none, good evening and welcome to this non-sportive education meeting. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you, please join me in a seat for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in
Mr. Stratus, will you please call the vote?
Yes, Mrs. Bolton.
Here.
Mrs. Farrell.
Here.
Mr. Grossman.
Present.
Mrs. Higby-Iono.
Present.
Mrs. Miller.
Here.
Mrs. Papalardo.
Here.
Mrs. Pope.
Here.
Quorum is seven oh.
Thank you. Alright, that's gonna take us to our first public comment this evening. The Pittman Public School District recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves in school matters of community interest. This is the first of two public comments we will have this evening. The first public hearing is on agenda items only. This is public comment, not a dialogue between the board and the public. You have three minutes to speak and it is your opportunity to comment or ask questions. In accordance with Board Policy Number 0167, we ask that you state your name, municipality of residence, and group affiliation if applicable. To be recognized to speak, I'm looking for the podium, just please come stand over here to my left and speak clearly for the folks at home. Seeing none, alright, it's gonna take us to correspondence. Mr. Stratus, we have been to correspondence. I will now move to accept a motion for the minutes of Pittman Board of Education as held on the dates listed below are approved as printed and reading dispensed with. May I have a second?
Second, Papalardo.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections and any abstentions? Okay, seeing none. We have a pretty brief president's report this evening. Councilwoman Guarney and I were able to meet, she's a district liaison for the Borough Council, on September 8th to discuss some of the ongoing projects with the district. And I asked her for feedback about what some additional information that we feel like isn't reaching all members of the public. We think it's really important, there's always gonna be segments of our population that we're not reaching through our social media and other outlets. So, we wanna kinda find out what our residents need to know and kinda aren't getting information to. So she was really helpful in sharing some of that with us and they provided some opportunities for Dr. Preston to come in and speak to council or senior outreach or a variety of different community members. Dr. Preston and I had the privilege of meeting with our student representatives and Dr. Preston will share more about that in his report. I just wanted to share with folks that I did have an opportunity to be in the building the other day. And Mrs. Stewart had reported that our chief happiness officer, her, the dog Nora, is such a big hit and that the students are like faces fall a bit if she's solo. And it appears to be the case. Nora is perhaps like star employee.
That's right, she is.
And I have maybe overstepped and requested that she be recognized in a staff spotlight and come to the meeting. I can see Mrs. Pope is equally happy and be allowed to hang out up here with us and I just wanna go on record. Yeah, I just feel like to go on record as making that request one more time.
Noted.
Thanks. We talked about, the branding at the high school looks really great. I don't know if folks saw the banners coming in. And our tagline this year is building out a legacy. We have back-to-school night here at the junior, senior high. I thought it went really well from, I was here as obviously a parent. And it was really wonderful to see all the new additions in and around the high school. I'm gonna pause for just one second. Are we holding this? There's something I included in my report and I just, we're holding that for additional information or sharing?
I think you should share.
Okay.
Yeah, that's great.
And the other thing that I did wanna say that I had heard some positive feedback about from parents was the memorial fence. There's the new fence structure outside of memorial that helps it make sure that we can keep our kiddos safe and tucked up by their teachers at dismissal and allows more control over a population. Just, again, speaking purely as mom, I think 103 and 4-year-olds are like herding cats. So, I think anything we can do to kinda maintain control, so I'm pleased to hear some parents reach out and say how positive the addition has been. Another board initiative, and we've kinda discussed this a little bit in committee structure, is that we would like to host, in conjunction with the Pittman Alumni Association, a pep rally before homecoming to be open to all of the community. There'll be more details to follow, but we're looking at hosting it on Summit Field between 5:30 and 6:30. And we're gonna reach out to a number of the youth-based organizations that work with the athletic programs in our community and the HSAs to host tables and have some additional information. But we will certainly make sure those details come out soon, but we just wanted to put it on folks' radar so that they were aware of it. And we are hoping that, you know, we can have some really great attendance and have a really great homecoming. So I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Dr. Preston.
Alright. Yes, thank you. So first and foremost, before I get into my report, I'd like to swear in our student reps so they can actually sit up here with us, with the board. So, if I can invite Abby, Abby Heil and Emily Ward up to the, you know what, where, Joe, just right over here, would that work?
Either way.
Okay. Alright, so I have the privilege and honor of swearing you guys in too. So, on behalf of the board, so come on up over here if you want and get in the camera. And there's a part you have to say too. Alright, so I'm gonna read this and that way you can take your place as officially on the board as well. It is an honor that you were selected to assist the Pittman Board of Education in guiding the education of our community's children. As you recite this oath of office, you assume an important responsibility as a student board representative. In carrying out this responsibility, you will be asked to embrace the roles of vision, structure, accountability, and advocacy. In providing vision, the board, working together with the community, envisions the future of education in Pittman and sets goals, defines outcomes, and establishes the direction for our schools. To achieve this vision, the board creates structure, because the board is accountable to the community, we are committed to continuous assessment of student learning and all conditions that affect the education of our children. We also recognize the importance of working closely with the superintendent, staff, families, and students to fulfill the vision we have created. Striving for excellence for every student in academic citizenship and personal growth. Alright, so here's your part. Having signed the acceptance of student board representative and oath of office, I hereby publicly affirm my commitment to that, to the oath of office. So here's what you'll read. I affirm that I will support the constitutions of the United States and the state of New Jersey. I affirm that I will support the constitutions of the United States.
I affirm that I will support the constitutional rights of the United States.
And the state of New Jersey.
And the state of New Jersey.
That I will promote the interests of education.
That I will promote the interests of education.
And that I will faithfully discharge my duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge my duties.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
I will contribute to board discussions.
I will contribute to board discussions.
By providing student insight and perspective.
By providing student insight and perspective.
Stretch that one. Serve as a liaison for the student body.
Serve as a liaison.
Liaison, yeah.
Of the student body.
And share information.
And share information.
With students, with students.
With students.
About the work of the board.
About the work of the board.
And district activities.
And district activities.
Welcome aboard.
We're gonna just take a brief, like, two-minute recess. We're gonna take a brief. Mrs. B.
As Miller mentioned, we've already met, Emily and Abby, discussing, you know, social media campaigns, just their role on the board. Really just picking their brain about, you know, what, how we can make the schools better, you know, how, you know, anything from, we talked about anything from lunches to programs to coursework to sports. There's a slew of other things we talked about too, but it's a great opportunity for us to talk. I invite Mr. Caltabiano into those meetings because he really does plan our curriculum and programs and it's really great to hear from, from students in that sense. And I would eventually like, we're gonna have some opportunities with, they're selected to the, as student reps of the board, in large part by their, they're being elected to student council president and vice president roles on the student body. And so really kind of working with that entire group, we're excited to do that as well this year and really kind of lean into student voice to make ourselves more, more relevant and responsive to students. So, welcome aboard.
Yeah, thank you.
A couple things, referendum updates. You probably still see the track not being done. We're still waiting on a few things, a few updates for the D zones, particular events that are gonna happen there for track and field. We wanna make sure we get that down right. Mr. Stratus and I meet at this point just about every Thursday with the, with the architects and the project managers and the construction managers. And so, it's going well. A lot, most of the things are still ahead of original schedule. We're still waiting on doors for the vestibules to PES and the high school should come in at any day now. So hopefully by, by our October board meeting, I'm reporting that the vestibules are complete as well, as well as the, as well as the roof at some point. They're working on that, kind of off-hours outside before and after school. The memorial fence, I just wanted to add that I know it's a big hit. There's, I have gotten some, some queries, I know Ms. Miller has as well, about latches. The latches, the contractor has been out to try to create the latches for those, for those exits and entryways. They should be out by Friday to finalize that and then the fence will be complete, but it was done, it was done in sections. And so, we're really excited about that as well. Another, just a construction update, the Wall Central Office where we are, at the WCK Wall School, we should be in, our office is October 6th. And so, we're excited about that. We did have, a couple weeks ago, we had Heddenberg Real Estate Company come and take some pictures. We're looking for a tenant for that space and we'll kinda ramp up those efforts once we are out of those desirable spaces that public, that entities would like to be, to be in, to make it more desirable for them. I just wanna talk about our opening PD with staff. I think it went really well. Kudos to Mr. Caltabiano for planning that, for school leadership, for being a part of that. We really have a, kind of a narrow focus this year on student engagement and character. And I don't know if you saw as you walked in here tonight, those, those in the crowd, certainly the board commented, I know students have commented on the different virtues that are listed throughout the school. That's, that's part of the project. Parents are eventually gonna start, you'll start seeing student, community surveys for people to really kind of partner with us in that effort. So we're really excited about that. We worked with, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Mr. Brendan Peterson, an actual Pittman resident, Gene Miller of Citrus, he's the CEO of Citrus. They are a consulting company that we're working with at this point for gratis. And I think it's important to say that, that they're really doing this work because, you know, they're, they're part and members of this community and they're helping us out. They work with national accounts, they work all over the country and yet they're, they're right here in our own backyard and so we're really excited about that. I wanna thank Mayor Razzie for giving our new staff a bus tour at the end of August. I don't know if you saw that on social media, but that was great. It was like, it was about a two-hour-long bus tour. I actually had to, I felt bad, I had to cut him off. I said, I think, I think we're, we gotta get back, some people had some other engagements, but, I mean, that could have been a four-hour tour. It was really, really enlightening. Now I'm going around, I was at, I was at one of the, I think the soccer game and I'm telling people, do you know where the grass is green here? I think I was telling you, the grass is green because it's built on clay and it retains water and it. So, I'm happy to disseminate that information as an expert of Pittman and all its idiosyncrasies now too, so I really appreciate that. I wanna thank Chief of Police, Dan McAtier. You'll see on the agenda, we're walking out on, or it's on there now?
It's on.
It's on there now. The, it was a late addition, but we will have a third full-time SRO. I believe he might be standing in the back, Mr. Rich, Officer Rich Herman. He'll be a third, right now we're kinda operating two point, what, 2.3, 2.2? He's pulled off, you know, 2.8, yeah, you're doing, you're doing a good job, but he's pulled off in for training and this just really gives us a constant presence of an SRO in each school. Certainly wanna thank town council for really kinda partnering with us with that. You know, it took a little work on our end to locate funds and be creative and I'm sure the same is true of town council, so really, really appreciate that. And we'll get that message out to parents too. I know that's, that's a, that's a topic I get asked all the time, you know, how come, how come we have only, you know, two and a half essentially officers? And I think this is something really exciting to promote here. Lastly, I have no hips to report and the security drills are listed. And that concludes my report.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. I'm gonna turn it over to our newly appointed student reps.
Okay, with students returning to school and our new late-in-phone policy, we've noticed that students are much more engaged in classes. And teachers are enjoying this role because kids are participating and eliminated distractions. Our activities are a success and students are looking forward to coming out to our new and existing clubs. We had our activities fair hosted. We have also noticed an increased involvement in the senior class regarding school activities. And the junior, senior high had a picture day on September 12th as well as back-to-school night on the 16th.
Fall sports seem to be running smoothly. I like to highlight the girls soccer 3-2 win against Glassboro. And other sports, girls tennis, football, cheer, field hockey, cross-country, and boy soccer. There's been a lot of support for the football team so far this season, I've noticed, and we hope for that to continue as well as show growing support for other fall sports. On the topic of football, the pink-out game is reported to be on October 2nd where 25% of the profit made will be donated to the Unite For Her like previous years. The Corner Press is an online shop that sells to anyone who wants to show their support. Please order your apparel now or anytime before September 25th, so you're guaranteed your clothes before the game. Also, the Pittman Music Association performed at the annual 9/11 ceremony again this year to honor those who were lost during the tragedy. On one last note, 46 seniors painted their parking spots this year on September 2nd and 3rd, which is an outstanding amount of participation compared to previous years, so, that's it.
A big question is, what's the theme for student week? Is it games? For hallway?
Oh, board games.
What did seniors pick?
They have candyland.
Candyland. Who, what, what are the other places?
I have it up, I have it actually on my computer right now.
Juniors are Monopoly.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, seniors are Candyland, juniors are Monopoly, sophomores are Jumanji, and freshmen are Clue. And the junior high is voting on theirs this Thursday.
Oh, they're gonna pick red too?
Yeah. Oh, that's so cute, I love it.
I love those themes.
No pressure juniors. Alright, that's gonna take us to Finance and Facility. I will turn it over to our committee chairman, Mr. Grossman.
Finance and Facilities Committee met on Wednesday, 9:10 at 3:30 PM Eastern Standard Time via Zoom meeting. In attendance were myself, Superintendent Robert Preston, Business Administrator Chris Stratus, the esteemed Rebecca Higby-Iono, and Board President April Miller. The meeting lasted 30 minutes and adjourned at 4:00 PM. This week's agenda was light and informative. Topics discussed where the annual audit for the district is underway with the software change implemented last year. There will be a slight delay in closing that audit, the 24-25 school year books, while the changeover catches up. The committee discussed, Superintendent Preston already stated. Yeah, I know, one of the three things. Well, we discussed selling our E250 van, but have decided to donate it to the Parks and Recs Department. They'll use it as an equipment shuttle. Our SRO situation, also updated on that. We've been discussing for two months now, appears to have reached an agreement with three full-time SRO officers from the Pittman Police Department, one full-time for each facility. Dr. Preston will be bringing information to the Pittman Senior Outreach members, including referendum updates and district-wide information. The Alumni Association will be burying a time capsule in front of PES on the school grounds. The Heddenberg Group was out to Wall School to photograph it and begin a marketing campaign to locate us a renter. And there is a discussion regarding installing a stop sign at Albert and Elm Avenue near Memorial School. This will conclude this week's report. And with that, I'll move items one through 11.
I'm gonna wait, I was gonna vote separate. Yeah, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, alright, may I have a second for Finance and Facilities, please?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on one through 11?
Do you want me to elaborate on the reports at all anymore?
Oh, well, I feel like, oh yeah, if you don't mind, just a little bit about that software change.
Right, so we talked about it in committee, but for everyone, with the software change, this one is called System 3000, it does finance, it does HR and payroll, all that together. It is less flexible than the previous one and so, one of the features is that it is very restrictive on entries, whether they're, you know, cash receipts or dispersments or whatever. They really keep things locked down within the pocket of the month. And so, as you mentioned with the delay, we haven't, we don't have the July reports on this agenda where normally you would see one a month basically. So right now, we're in that little bit of a backlog and they'll all be kind of flowing as soon as we get through that. So it's a transition of the software and going through the audit now, or those guys will be in here in about two weeks. And so everything will start flowing after that, but it's just a different feature that is more restrictive than the old one.
Deliberately.
Yes, 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 and we'll work around that, but everything will be here soon.
Great, okay, perfect. Any questions from the board? Okay, Mr. Stratus, please call the vote.
Mrs. Bolton.
Yes.
Mrs. Farrell. Mr. Grossman.
Yes.
Mrs. Higby-Iono.
Yes.
Mrs. Papalardo.
Yes.
Mrs. Pope.
Yes.
Mrs. Miller.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Alright, and then we do have an additional item for Finance and Facility, alternative with Dr. Preston.
Yes, so I know there was mention of, when, you made mention of a meeting with Ms. Guarney. Reached out to, I was remiss in saying thank you to Eileen Solomon, had been speaking to her all week. I'm gonna be presenting on November 17th to the Senior Outreach Center, almost a year to the day that I spoke last year, which was great. It was probably my favorite day as a superintendent in Pittman. But heading back there, really just kind of updating them on the referendum, thanking them for their support last year. One of the things that we had talked about as a board as well is making admission to sporting events, which would be football and basketball free to seniors as well as students. And so, right now I'd like to walk on a motion for senior citizens, really kind of as a token of appreciation and their support of the schools too. Walk on a motion for senior citizens and students to be admitted free to all basketball and football games remaining. I've already been in touch, just so the boards are aware, with Ms. Solomon to get that word out because the Senior Outreach Center met yet. that word out because the Senior Outreach Center met yesterday. I wanted her to be able to spread that word. She has a few other meetings ended this week and Ms. Miller made a good point in our committee meetings, uh, the, the football games next week, the, the, and we would like them to, you know, be able to, so walk on that motion now.
Okay, may I have a second?
Second.
Papalardo. Any discussion?
I think that the consensus amongst members of the board was that the, um, if free admissions would apply to any Pittman residents, we really want to thank them and we appreciate their ongoing support of the schools. We know that the referendum was a, a big ask of our community and they have poured a lot into our schools over the years and continue to do so. And so I think, uh, the least we can do is to invite them on over to these games and welcome them.
All right, Mr. Stratus, please call the vote.
Mrs. Bolton?
Uh, yes.
Mrs. Farrell?
Yes.
Mr. Grossman?
Yes.
Mrs. Higby-Iono?
Yes.
Mrs. Papalardo?
Yes.
Mrs. Pope?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, curriculum instruction, I will turn it over to our committee chairwoman, Mrs. Bolton.
All right, here we go. The curriculum and instruction committee met virtually on September 10th at 4:30. The meeting lasted about an hour. In attendance were Dr. Preston, Mr. Catalbiano, Mrs. Miller, Mrs. Pope, and myself. It's a busy meeting, some of the items we talked about on the agenda. Number nine is the INRS Coordinator, which will replace a few positions we previously had to better fit the needs of the students and staff. Number 11 is Reflex Math. It's a new math basic skills program for grades two through five with an emphasis on mastering math facts and fact families. And it sounds really fun because it's game, game theme, right? Um, number 13 is an ELA pilot for second grade. Number 15 is the approval of IXL for seventh and eighth grades to support their lessons and extra time in math and ELA labs. Uh, number 16 is our Business Academy's Class Curriculum Guides. Accounting 1 and 2, Intro to Business and Intro to Computers are all completed. Um, big thank you to Mr. Catalbiano who did a great job of partnering with Salem, uh, Salem Community College. Okay. I was just making sure this updated was right. I'm like, wait. Um, Salem Community College to make sure our students are receiving the most, uh, college credits possible while participating in our academy. So he's got a good thing going with our Business Academy. How many credits do our kids, will our kids get out of school now with?
So the incoming freshman will walk out with 24, just from the academy. They can expand upon that.
Yes, so 24 Business Academy credit, uh, college credits for, which is awesome, in my opinion. Um, and last up is the approval, which someone already stole my show, um, the approval to bury a time capsule in celebration of our recent 100th graduating class of Pittman High School. The capsule was donated by the Pittman Alumni Association and will be buried out front of the elementary school prior to the homecoming football game on October 24th. So the goal is to do that before the pep rally and so we'll bury that, go across the street, have a big pep rally, which I'm super pumped about, and then we'll head back to the game after that. So, take a nap now, it's going to be a long night.
Did we, uh, should we figure, did we figure out where the old one might be or even the where?
No, we're still researching the old one. Anyone, I, we think it might be the class of 90.
Two.
What were you, two?
I was 93.
Okay, then it was 92. Um, we think it might be the class of 92 that buried it when they were in fifth grade.
Not here, not on our premises though.
We think it's buried at the manor.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So, yeah, because like we said, those people probably didn't travel over to our schools to bury it. So it was a.
The newspaper pictures appear to be.
There.
Say that again, class of 92 when they were in fifth grade, right?
Yes. Yeah, because it was buried in 1987 and it says a group of fifth graders, but it does say a group of fifth graders from the Pittman Middle School. So we're a little confused if that was part of the wing or if it was sixth graders from the middle school or if it was fifth graders from the middle school wing. It could have been that because that's when the elementary school was still at the middle school as well. So, we're still investigating.
If any members of the public have a lead.
This time though, we are, as alumni, going to put a little plaque of some sort on our time capsule so it does not go missing this time around.
You should build a monument, like a.
Fifth, it says fifth grade, the information you have says fifth grade from the middle school.
It says fifth grade from the middle, middle school.
Centered use.
We'll send you the.
So I'll ask Jeff Smith tomorrow because that would be him.
I knew we would find somebody in.
His wing, so.
That's probably it.
Somebody's there now.
So I'll ask him.
But I was, yeah. Couple of years.
I'm just playing friend tag with the woman at the manor.
Yeah, 87 I was in high school. I was a freshman. That guy, freshman or sophomore.
I have to take like a metal detector around.
You graduated '90, right?
I got a metal detector.
You were a sophomore.
I was a sophomore.
I was a freshman in 87.
Yeah. All right, so, super exciting around here. With that, I'll make a motion to approve items one through 38 as written.
May I have a second? Second, oh, okay. Any further discussion? Okay, Mr. Stratus, please call the vote.
Mrs. Bolton?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrell?
Yes.
Mr. Grossman?
I must abstain from item number 25 and yes to the rest.
Okay. Mrs. Higby-Iono?
Yes.[1580.33]